Good evening and welcome. City Council is now in session. Please be advised that Councilmember Butler Barlow will not be in attendance this evening and has been excused. At this time, please stand for the invocation by Councilmember Rector, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather this evening in your presence to serve the citizens of this great city of Suffolk that we are all proud to call home. Help us as we navigate our way through the issues that are before us this evening. We choose to look at matters that have the potential to divide us more as opportunities for solutions that bring us together. As we watch events unfold around the world, we are reminded of just how fortunate we are to live in this country. Separated by oceans, we remain for the most part untouched by the wars and violence that seem to encompass so much of the rest of the planet. We may live in troubled times, but troubled times have always been with us in the past and will be with us in the future. Let us give thanks to our first responders who put their lives on the line on a daily basis to keep us safe. As we grieve with the city of Virginia Beach on the loss of their two officers, Cameron Girvin and Christopher Reese, let this serve as a reminder that our men and women on our police force, that even the most routine of stops can have the potential to end in tragedy and forever change the lives of the family of those officers. Join me now in a moment of silence as we reflect on the loss of these officers and pray for As March is Women's History Month, let me end with a quote from Supreme Court Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. Fight for the things that you care about, but do it in a way that will lead others to join you. And then all of this, we ask in your name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The Freedom of Information Act certification is required at this time. Madam Clerk, will you please present the resolution for consideration?
A resolution of certification of the closed meeting of March 5, 2005 pursuant to Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia, as amended, is presented at this time. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Suffolk hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of Virginia law, and only such public business matters, as were identified in the motion convening the closed session meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council of the City of Suffolk in the closed meeting.
Counsel, a motion been presented for consideration. Councilmember Bennett?
Move for approval.
Got a motion for approval from Councilmember Bennett. Vice Mayor Ward?
Second.
Second from Vice Mayor Ward, is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members, please refer to the clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rector?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Wright?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ward?
Yes.
Mayor Doobin?
Yes.
The vote is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
We now move to approval of the minutes from the October 16, 2024 work session and regular meeting, and a motion would be in order. Councilmember Williams?
Move for approval.
Motion for approval, Councilmember Williams, Councilmember Johnson?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Johnson, is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rector?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Wright?
Vice Mayor Ward?
Yes.
Mayor Doobin?
Yes.
The vote is approved by a vote of six to zero.
We have no special presentations this evening. At this time, we'll consider the removal of items from the consent agenda and adoption of the entire agenda as presented. Removal of any item from the consent agenda would only be necessary if any member of City Council wishes to vote on a specific item separately and a motion would be required. Questions and requests for information on specific agenda items can be addressed during the consideration of the consent agenda after the agenda speakers. If any member of council wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda, be voted on separately, a motion would be appropriate at this time. Hearing none, a motion to adopt the agenda as presented would be appropriate at this time. Councilmember Johnson?
Move to accept a consent agenda as presented.
A motion for approval from Councilmember Johnson, Councilmember Bennett. Second from Councilmember Bennett, is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rector?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Wright?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ward?
Yes.
Mayor Doobin?
Yes.
The vote is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Madam Clerk, do we have any agenda speakers at this time? In this, so please explain the guidelines.
Tonight, we have one agenda speaker, and each speaker, addressing counsel under the agenda speakers, will have five minutes to present their comments to City Council. The first speaker is Rachel Boots, 4445 Willard Avenue, Chevy Chase, Maryland, regarding Agenda Item Number 12, An Ordinance Granting a Two-Year Extension of an Approved Conditional Use Permit to Establish Solar Energy Facility Use on Property Located on Wilroy Road at Zoning Map 26, Parcel 28, Account Number 300849000, CUP 2024-029.
Hello, good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Thank you for having this meeting tonight. I return after our conditional use permit was approved a few years ago for the solar facility located on Wilroy Road in the industrial zoned property next to the Solinus Chemical Manufacturing Plant. So we're partnering with Solinus to develop that property as part of the clean energy initiatives on Virginia to put more clean energy on the grid. With that, we're working with Dominion on our interconnection, so figuring out any upgrades and design requirements to add that solar to the grid, which unfortunately is a lengthy process to work out that design between this site and the Crittenton Substation where we're connecting is the Nansamond River. So we're trying to work around and design that connection, and that's why it's taken a little bit longer than we originally expected, and we're requesting this extension. I wanted to make myself available here tonight for any questions about the project and the extension request. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk, do we have any other agenda speakers?
No, sir.
Hearing none, please present the consent agenda for consideration.
Item number seven, a resolution declaring and rescinding a local emergency. Item number eight, a resolution to accept a donation of personal property for the Suffolk Public Library from the American Heart Association. Item number nine, an ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management for the Suffolk Department of Fire and Rescue. Item number 10, a resolution expressing the concurrence of the City Council of the City of Suffolk, Virginia with the inducement resolution adopted by the Economic Development Authority of Enrico County, Virginia, and approving the issuance of revenue bonds for the benefit of Bonds Secures Mercy Health Incorporated and Harborview Health Center.
Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the items.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, in regards to Item 7, starting on February 9th and extending into February 20th, the Hampton Roads area experienced snowfall ranging from eight to 12 inches across the region. State of local emergency was declared on February 19th, allowed the city to receive through the state if necessary, to, excuse me, to receive aid through the state if necessary. The state of local emergency was rescinded on February 21st with the reopening of city facilities. Item 7 is a resolution declaring and rescinding the declaration of emergency. Regarding Item 8, the city has received a donation of personal property valued at $585 from the American Heart Association of 15 blood pressure monitors and cuffs. The equipment will be held at the Suffolk Libraries for citizens to check out to use. Adoption of the resolution is necessary to accept and record the donated personal property. Regards to Item 9, the city has received $21,781 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management in support of the Suffolk Department of Fire and Rescue. The funding will be used for emergency management salary match. Adoption of this ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures with consolidated grants fund budget by the $21,781. There is a local cash match required in an amount of $21,781, which is provided by the Department of Fire and Rescue FY 2425 operating budget. In regards to Item 10, Bonds Secured Mercy Health Incorporated 501(c)(3) will be undertaking a public offering this spring to sell tax-exempt bonds to finance various health care facilities and capital expenditures in Virginia, including capital expenditures within Suffolk at the Harborview Bonds Secured Health Center. Enrico County Economic Development Authority will serve as the issue of the health facilities' revenue bonds, not to exceed 600 million. A portion of the bonds not to exceed 90 million will be allocated to the Harborview Medical Center. Bonds Secured Mercy Health is requesting the City of Suffolk for approval relating to the issuance of tax-exempt bonds for the benefit of 501(c)(3) organizations. Pursuant to the Virginia Industrial Development Revenue Bond Act, the City of Suffolk Economic Development Authority has approved the resolution in support of the issuance at their January 15, 2025 meeting. This requested action is conduit financing per the Revenue Bond Act. The City of Suffolk or Suffolk EDA will not bear any financial obligation or responsibility for the financing or debt or any impacts from it.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. If there are no questions about the items, a motion would be in order to approve the consent agenda as presented. Councilmember Williams?
Move for approval.
Motion for approval from Councilmember Williams, Vice Mayor Ward?
Second.
Second from Vice Mayor Ward, is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rector?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Wright?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ward?
Yes.
Mayor Doobin?
Yes.
The vote is approved by seven to zero.
We do have one public hearing this evening, which is a resolution to adopt the Capital Improvements Program and Plan for fiscal years 2025-26 through 2034-35. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, during your February 5 work session, Finance Director Charles Meek provided City Council a detailed overview of the proposed FY 2025 through 26, excuse me, 25-26 through 2034-2035 Capital Improvements Plan Budget and Plan. As previously stated, the plan continues to complete various ongoing projects or initiatives. At the February 5 meeting, comments were received from City Councils concerning the Driver Elementary School Site and the Route 17 Widening Project. Prior to tonight's public hearing, Mr. Meek will present a brief overview of the plan and address the comments received at the February 5 meeting. Charles?
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As the manager mentioned, we have a brief presentation overview of the proposed CIP. The five-year total across all funds is proposed at $533.8 million, and for the 10-year period, it's $2 billion. Looking at the general government project revenues over the five-year period, 41% would be from general obligation bonds, 40% from state, federal, and other funding, and 19% from general fund and capital reserve funds, which amount to $44.4 million in general fund cash and $30.7 million from the capital reserve funds. Looking at general government expenditures, just the local funding or bond and general fund cash, 40% of those funds are directed towards public schools projects, 19% for public safety projects, 16% for transportation projects, 9% for public buildings, 8% for parks and recreation, and 7% for village neighborhoods and downtown. This does not include any state or federal grant funding, which is largely programmed for transportation and parks and recreation projects. At the last council meeting, a couple of discussion items were brought up after the presentation, one being the Driver Elementary School demolition. Staff has gone back and estimated that cost at $650,000, exploring options to demolish the main building and retain the 9,000-square-foot gymnasium. The estimated cost of that portion of it is $620,000. If council desires, you could adopt the CIP tonight with an amendment to include the Driver Elementary School as a project in the CIP in fiscal year 26, using $620,000 from the construction or capital reserve funds. The trailers at the Driver Elementary School are estimated to remove those at $30,000. This can be done in the current fiscal year using capital contingency funds, and no council action would be required for that. And then the last item that was discussed was the Burnhow Manor Turn Lane. An option there for you tonight would be to adopt the CIP with another amendment to update the language on page 61 in the section titled Local Urban Roadway Construction Comprehensive Plan to Reflect a Turn Lane into Burnhow Manor as Part of the Route 17 Widening Project. Next steps tonight are to hold a public hearing, receive public comment on the proposed CIP, provide any recommended edits, and then adopt a resolution approving the CIP, and then we'll be coming back to you in April with the operating and capital budget. The first year of the adopted CIP will be included in the proposed capital budget.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Meeks. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, could please explain the timing system?
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and address, and will receive three minutes to offer their comments.
This is a public hearing. For the first speaker, please come forward and provide their name and address. Do we have anyone who would like to speak to this resolution? Hearing none, this public hearing is now closed. Counsel, a resolution has been presented for consideration. Questions, comments, or a motion? Councilmember Wright?
I have a comment first. I wanted to thank the team for putting together the information for possible inclusion in the CIP. As all of you, many of you are aware, Driver Elementary has been a big concern, and so any consideration to move forward on this is just, I'm happy about that. And then Burnhow Manor also is a big safety issue for the members in that community, so I wanted to say thank you. And with that, I move to adopt the fiscal year 2026 through 2035 Capital Improvement Plan to include Driver Elementary School, adopt the CIP with amendment to include the school funding of $620,000 from the construction reserve, and also to adopt the CIP with amendment to update the language on page 61, Local Urban Roadway Construction to Reflect the Burnhow Manor as Part of the Route 17 Widening Project.
Okay, we've got a motion for approval with amendments. Do we have a second? One more questions or comments? Councilmember Williams?
I second that, ma'am.
Second from Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Rector?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just would like, maybe Kevin can answer this question. Kevin, why? I was just, in looking at the village and neighborhood improvements, up at the top of the spreadsheet, I says, it says future and proposed village and neighborhood improvement projects as determined by the Neighborhood Assessment Tool. So I went and, courtesy of Al Moore, was given a copy of the Neighborhood Assessment Tool, and it was done back in 2013 with a lot of the data actually going back to 2005, which I guess is now 20 years old. Is there any thought to updating this tool to kind of reflect more what's going on? You know, 20 years is a lot of time for the water to go over the dam, and things in different neighborhoods have changed. Some have improved, some have deteriorated, you know, a little bit more over time, so...
Updating a document like that obviously is always something that is on the table. That, at the time, it was a very thorough document that looked at about 30 of our neighborhoods in some of the older sections of the city. I think a lot of that data, or at least where that data led us, is still solid, and we still have some neighborhoods to check off. However, looking further at updating that information is certainly on the table.
If I could, ma'am, Mayor?
Yes.
To add on to Kevin, just to reinforce what Kevin just said, that document looked at all the, I think there were 35 neighborhoods?
35 neighborhoods.
And looking at what, you know, conditions they were, what the impacts of those neighborhoods were. And of course, one of the biggest things that jumped out there was open ditches and items of that nature. So what you've seen over the years is a methodical approach of trying to close up some of those streets, trying to bring those neighborhoods up to a more, a better-looking condition. So, and you'll notice a lot of those are to the eastern part of the downtown area where we've been working. And I think three more years, we will have accomplished what we were trying to do there with the open ditches. And obviously, as you look at the CIP three years out, it's set for future projects. So obviously, before we get to the future projects, we'll need to probably relook at what we, the work we've done back then, but this document has held pretty true through, even though it's getting age, it's held pretty true as you look around and ride around our city, what are the conditions in some of our neighborhoods. So, yes, it probably needs a refresh, but I think we'll find that it may not change the order that much.
Okay. And I'm sure a lot of the underlying data probably has not changed, but hopefully, since 2013, some improvements have been made to the neighborhoods that were further down the list, and perhaps maybe there might be a juggling of the priority list as we look
Councilmember Wright?
Yes, sir. So in my motion, I did the motion to, with the amendments, but because this is my first motion, I want to ensure that, do I need to include the increase that brings the total up? So the $620,000 brings the total from, well, brings the total to $534,479,230. So for the record, I just wanted that to be there. So it'll go up from $533,859,230 to $534,479,230. Thank you.
Okay, so we're amending the motion to include the total of the funds?
Correct.
To allow for the additional funding for Driver?
Correct.
Other than that, the motion's fine?
Thank you.
Okay, and we had a second from Councilmember Williams. Are you okay with a second?
Yes.
Okay, we now have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion in the motion? Hearing none, just a couple, very quick comments. I think that the distribution of resources is equitable, equitably distributed across our city. We've got some great projects in there. There was, I know I've gotten a couple calls on the Route 460 long-range number being increased, and that is strictly due to our Smart Scale application, from what I understand, and using the recommendation from VDOT as far as the number's concerned. So I just wanted to explain that, where that came from. I think it's pretty impressive that over the five years, we've used $30.7 million out of our capital reserve fund. We've established capital reserves just for that purpose, which allows us to latitude to use those resources in event we need them without either not doing them or creating additional debt, or finding those funds from some other means that we were going to use them for. So my hat's off, staff did an excellent job. I mean, once again, you know, public schools and public safety is the majority of our budget, public schools and public safety is also the majority of our CIP, which it should be. When the public reviews our CIP and as well as our budget, please, please take a look at what the revenue source is. In some of these cases, it's two, three, four million dollars, it's a grant, it has to be used for a specific purpose. So when you look at something, and it may be, I'm not picking on Parks and Rec, but there's $2 million for a trail, you know, say, well, instead of having the trails, why don't they fix my roads? Well, it doesn't work like that. You know, that money is designated for that particular use. So what you need to be concerned with is what we are using our funds for, your local dollars, your local tax dollars. dollars, your local tax dollars, out of the general fund, as well as what we take from reserves. So with that being said, I support the CIP as well. Councilmember Johnson?
Yeah, just one comment. I support the CIP as well, but I'll take this moment to make this a little bit of a lesson in how the CIP works. We have a number of constituents from our borough here tonight who want to speak on a project, but, and I please want you to speak, it's time to get it started, that we can start talking about it. But this is, the CIP, the night of the CIP is not the night for that. The night of the CIP is to recognize what's going to happen next year in the future. So I just don't want anybody to be misled, but please speak later, let this council know what your concerns are and what our concerns are, and thank you for coming. I just wanted to let that be known. But for tonight, I am excited to support the CIP and move it forward for next year. Thank you.
Okay, council, any other questions, comments? If not, we have a motion on the floor for approval with the stated amendments by Councilmember Wright, which was seconded by Councilmember Williams. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you will please call the roll.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rector?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Wright? Vice Mayor Ward?
Yes.
Mayor Duman?
Yes.
The vote is approved by seven to zero.
Okay, we'll now move to ordinances. First is an ordinance granting a two-year extension of an approved conditional use permit to establish solar energy facility use on a property located on Willroy Road at zoning map 26, parcel 28, account number 300849000. This is CUP 2024-29. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Kevin Wine, Director of Planning and Community Development, will provide the staff report. Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. And as you heard during agenda speakers, an agent on behalf of the applicant presented some of the challenges that they're facing on this project as it relates to reaching that interconnection agreement with Dominion, which we have seen time and time again has been a struggle as it relates to these solar energy facilities. But that is ultimately what has led to this request. It was approved approximately two years ago, almost to the day, and action needs to be taken on that prior to its expiration for it to be extended. This is located very near the Solenocite, immediately adjacent to it, between that and the Bridlewood subdivision to its north, right along Willroy Road. It was originally approved, like I said, two years ago, March 15th, 2023. The original approval window was two years, so it's set to expire on March 15th. They're requesting an extension of the original permit due to those delays that they have seen in ongoing discussions with Dominion on that interconnection agreement. A quick refresher, this is a 19.5 acre site. Ultimately, it will be a three-megawatt facility. Here is the exhibit that is associated with that original approved ordinance. And to remind you all, City Council, you may grant an extension of a use permit for a period not to exceed the original period of validity. So in this case, it is two years. As such, we are recommending approval of this extension as requested by the applicant, meaning that it would need to be established on the property by March 15th, 2027. That concludes my presentation on this item. I'll be happy to stand by for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Councilmember, an ordinance has been presented for consideration. Questions, comments, or a motion? Councilmember Williams? I move to approve a motion for approval from Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Johnson?
Um, just a comment, and I'm not going to belabor this, but my opinion has changed since we approved this ordinance back when, and I truly think that this area of the city is too, very, very valuable to the city and to our traffic moving through the city, and as of this moment, I'm opposed.
Okay, we have a motion for approval from Councilman Williams. Do we have a second? Councilmember Rector?
I'll second the motion.
And a second from Councilmember Rector. Councilmember Wright?
I'm sorry, say, he got your second.
Okay, let's see. Just one, I just got one comment before we vote. When this came up two years ago, I abstained from the vote because I owned an adjacent piece of property. At this time, I no longer own that property, so just check with the city attorney, is it okay for me to vote this time? He's taken his idea. Okay, he usually goes this, must've got a guess. Okay, so that's why I abstained last time, if anybody looks it up, but I am going to vote this time. I do support, and the extension as well. This particular project is in a, not only a commercial area, it's on zone that, it's on property that's zone manufacturing, so it's not agricultural land, and I think the location is appropriate. So with that being said, we have a motion for approval from Councilman Williams with a second by Councilmember Rector. If there is no more discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bennett?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
No.
Councilmember Rector?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Wright?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ward?
Yes.
Mayor Duman?
Yes.
The vote is approved by five to two.
Okay, we have no resolutions this evening. We do have a staff report in regards to significant land use issues. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, again, Mayor, Vice Members, City Members of City Council, Director of Planning, Community Development, Kevin Wine, will provide the staff report. Kevin?
Thank you again, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. I think we've been at this for almost two years now, but as promised, when we have items of significance from a land use perspective, we promise to give you all an overview prior to those public hearings being scheduled before the Planning Commission in their consideration, and ultimately, you all's consideration as well. And the threshold that we utilize for that significance is if it's 100 residential units or greater, if it is 100,000 square feet or more of retail space or commercial space, or it isn't a property of 100 acres or more. In this case, we have a project that consists of greater than 100 units. So we will present you with an overview on this particular application, but it is within the Harborview area. Specifically, it's part of the Harborview Station Master Plan Community. It is located near the Bonza Coors Hospital that is under construction currently, and a lot of the development that has infilled along that corridor over the last several years. It has quite a history, going back to 2007. That's when the original mixed-use development overlay zoning was applied to this area and approved by City Council. That's been modified a handful of times since, notably in 2010 and twice in 2013. Presently, this 19-acre parcel as part of the mixed-use development master plan is designated for use as medical, office, retail, commercial, or assisted living. There is a proffer associated with the development that limits the construction of 200 independent living or assisted living units. My understanding is they were slated for this property. Don't necessarily believe that the residential units by themselves would be able to go on this property without it falling under that assisted living classification, which is pretty specific and more of a commercial use. But in this case, the proposal would zone this property out of the MUD. It would take it out of the master plan, and they would rezone it to RU24 for the purpose of constructing 344 residential units. 288 of those would be multifamily units, and 56 would be single-family attached town homes. They have submitted proffers in support of this application, including that 155 of those multifamily units will consist of one-bedroom units. That's significant as that reduces their impact on the school system per RUDO generation figures. Additionally, 189 of those units would consist of two or more bedrooms, and based upon the generation figures, they are proffering a cash contribution to the school system to advance capacity in the amount of $2.9 million. Lastly, the applicant has provided, has proffered, rather, substantial compliance with conceptual layout that I'll show you here in a moment, as well as elevations for both the multifamily buildings and the townhomes. So here you have the conceptual plan as proffered by the applicant in this case. You can see the more red buildings there are your multifamily structures, and then you have those townhomes that are more of a yellow issue there at the front along Harbor Town Parkway. Here you have some renderings and elevations that have been proffered for the multifamily product, and here you have the same for the townhomes. So the next steps, Planning Commission public hearing is scheduled for March 18th on this item. Should that get through Planning Commission with a recommendation of either approval or denial, it would be slated for public hearing before you all at your April 16th meeting. And as a reminder to the public, you can find information on this application on our website, sufficva.us, and you can go to the Planning tab and click on rezonings and conditional uses, public hearings, and get all the information submitted in support of this application. But that concludes my presentation and overview on this item. I'll be happy to stand by for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wine. Okay, we'll now move on to motions. We have a motion to schedule a City Council work session for March 19th, 2025 at 4:00 PM. Unless canceled by the Mayor and City Manager, and a motion would be in order. Councilmember Wright?
Move to approve.
And a motion for approval from Councilmember Wright. Councilmember Williams?
Second it, Mayor.
Second from Councilmember Williams. Any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Councilmembers, please respond to the clerk call the roll, please.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rector?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Wright?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ward?
Yes.
Mayor Duman?
Yes.
The motion's approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Now moved in non-agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, do we have any non-agenda speakers? And if so, please explain the guidelines.
Guidelines for the non-agenda speakers period are outlined in City Code Section 2-96 and permit each speaker five minutes to address the City Council. Each person participating under the item of business entitled non-agenda speakers shall limit their remarks to services, policies, and affairs of city government, and shall be permitted five minutes for the purpose of presenting his or her matter. Speakers appearing before City Council will not be permitted to participate in the following activities: campaign for public office, engage in personal attacks, promote private business ventures, or use profanity or vulgar language. Speakers who violate these rules will be declared out of order by the presiding officer and will immediately yield the floor and be seated.
Call you first.
The first non-agenda speaker will be Ms. Jopina Hill, 7628 South Key Road, from the Holland Holy Neck Civic League about the Nansman County Training School.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Duman, Vice Mayor Ward, and other members of the City Council. I am Jopina Hill, representing the Holland Holy Neck Civic League, and I, and the members of the Holland, Holy Neck Civic League is supporting the Nansman County Training School project. At this time, I would like all friends and members of the Holland Holy Neck Civic League
The next speaker is H. E. Howell, 8201 Leafwood Road, representing the Holy Neck Holland Civic Association regarding the Nansman County Training School.
Good evening, Mayor Duman, Vice Mayor Ward, City Manager, distinguished council members. I am the grandson of Hannibal E. Howell, Senior, and Ms. Phyllis Howell. They were the original principal and teachers of the training school. Thousands of these buildings have been lost throughout the South over many, many years, but they've been given a chance to be reimagined as community centers, they've been given a chance to be reimagined as shelters, many different things. The specific architecture of these buildings is an absolute necessity to the context of the community, and we would like to present this, and we would like to continue this same context in our community today.
The next speaker is Pete Copeland, 114 North Gate Lane, representing the Nansman County Training School Heritage Center regarding multipurpose community center.
Good evening, Mayor Dumas, Vice Mayor Ward, and other members of the City Council. My name is Garland Copeland, but I go by the nickname and all my friends call me Pete. Briefly, I'd like to take a few minutes to ask who I am and why I stand before you this evening. I'm a native of Suffolk, Virginia. I'm a proud graduate of Forest Glen High School, the class of 1972. Immediately after graduating from high school from Forest Glen, I enlisted in the United States Marine Corps as a PVT private. I proudly served my country and, yes, my hometown of Suffolk, Virginia, in the Marine Corps for over 30 years, attaining the rank of Major and receiving the Legion of Merit Award upon my retirement from the Marine Corps. I stand before you this evening in support of a worthy community project, a worthy community effort, the construction of a multipurpose community center, a facility that is much needed in the community, a facility that will be built on land already owned by the city. In a few minutes, I will present our mission statement. I have copies of our mission statement in the basket for Mayor, Vice Mayor, and other members of the City Council. I also have a letter there from Reverend Dr. Stefan Johnson, the pastor of Pleasant Grove Baptist Church, in support of this project. Our mission statement: The purpose of the facility is to establish a multipurpose center that will meet the various needs of the community. The facility will provide a venue for small meetings, study groups, receptions, and other limited civic activities. Additionally, the facility can be utilized as a community emergency shelter. I would also, at this point, like to provide clarification as to what the project is. And upfront and for the record, it is not a recreational center. It is to be a multipurpose community center. Thank you, God bless you, and have a great evening.
The next speaker is Joel Copeland, 7681 Gates Road, about Nansman County School
Good evening, Mayor Duman, Vice Mayor Ward, honorable City Councilmen and women who are, and all of the others who are around here who are taking part in our great city. To me, I was born many years ago in a little place called Holland, Virginia then, and I grew up, went to college, came back home, but I retained my Suffolk residency in all my travels in Europe and in different places, and I came back home... And I came back home and I found Holland, or the southwestern portion of Suffolk, to be a place that had remarkable land for growth. And in the last five to six years, the population in that area has more than doubled. Just looking at it from a regular person driving, if you ride back through those areas, we have beautiful homes, we have new families that are coming out of Virginia Beach, out of Norfolk, and it's just a beautiful place to be. As Pete mentioned to you all, we need a multi-purpose facility out there because in case when we had a climate condition this afternoon, we have no shelter within twenty miles on some of the people who live in that area. And many of them have very nice homes, they pay taxes, as well as myself and many others. And we just are asking you if you can find some way to look at the Nansman County Training School area, right there where southwestern used to be. It's about eighty-eight acres of land. We need that with the families coming in and with the development in the northern section of Suffolk. It would be a small drop in the bucket to take care of us. I mean, you know your budgets, but we are asking for you to look at us and please help us. And that is, they are my remarks, and God bless you in your endeavors. Thank you.
That concludes the speakers, Mayor.
All right, we'll now move to new business. Madam Clerk, do we have any additions to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Mayor Dooman. The following nominations are presented for city council's consideration. For the Community Criminal Justice Board, Fifth Judicial District, Citizen Representative, Shanna Silver. For the Economic Development Authority of the City of Suffolk, Chukatuck Borough Rep, Karima Lockwood. At-large Rep., B. J. Willie. For the Paul D. Camp Community College Board, Jennifer Bivens.
Counsel, a motion would be in order. Councilmember Johnson?
Move for approval.
A motion for approval from Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Rector?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Rector. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rector?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Wright?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ward?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
At this time, was asked if Media and Community Relations has any announcements.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, city council members, and Mr. City Manager. Pleased to begin our announcements with some exciting news from our Economic Development Department. On February the eighth, Flicker Sticks celebrated its grand opening in downtown Suffolk. This charming candle boutique specializes in hand-poured soy wax candles, offering a variety of delightful scents, perfect for weddings, birthdays, showers, and other special occasions. Flicker Sticks is a glowing addition to downtown Suffolk. Glow Fiber continues to stream into households, thousands of homes in Suffolk, but on February thirteenth, Glow Fiber opened its doors to its brick and mortar store off of Godwin Boulevard. With high-speed load latency and unmatched reliability, Glow Fiber is more than just internet service, it's a seamless digital streaming experience, offering phone and video service and Wi-Fi that reaches every corner of your home or business. The City of Suffolk Finance Department is pleased to announce that the 2024 Popular Annual Financial Report is now available online. This P A F R offers Suffolk residents and stakeholders a clear, accessible overview of the city's financial health, highlighting key trends and an overall fiscal outlook. To explore the city's financial landscape in this report, you can click on the Finance Department link on our website, SuffolkVA.us. The Suffolk Police Department Dive Team recently made a splash at the annual Polar Plunge in Virginia Beach, braving the icy ocean water. On February the eighth, these dedicated divers dove with double duty. Not only did they, whoops, not only did they help to raise money and awareness for Special Olympics Virginia, they also helped to secure safety, which is for all the divers out there and the plungers, which this year was a record four thousand one hundred fifty-one plungers, raising one point seven million dollars for Special Olympics Virginia. Now, a very important reminder right now from Suffolk Fire and Rescue, along with the Virginia Department of Forestry. Fire season is here, and the four P M. burn law is now in effect from February the fifteenth through April thirtieth, and all open air burning, all open air burning before four P M. is prohibited if the fire is within three hundred feet of woods or dry grass. However, burning is permitted from four P M. to midnight, provided proper precautions are taken and the fire is attended at all times. Suffolk Parks and Rec and the Suffolk Art Gallery invite you to the opening reception of the Forty-first Annual Juried Photography Exhibition on Saturday, March the eighth, from four to six P M. This is the largest and longest-running juried photography exhibit in Hampton Roads. The annual showcase features stunning photography of diverse subjects and techniques. The exhibit at the Suffolk Gallery, Art Gallery runs through April the eighteenth. And we have a casting call from the city's Parks and Rec Department as well. They're looking for cultural groups and performers to join together for a celebration of global proportions. The department is organizing International Fest. This vibrant event is to showcase all of the what's incredible in Suffolk to make it Suffolk itself one of a kind. Sign up by this Friday, this Friday, March seventh, by emailing parksemail@SuffolkVA.us. Include your contact information, a short description of your group of performance, and the timing needed, plus any special equipment or setup needs. A Parks and Rec Playground update to share, starting on Monday, March the tenth, the playground at Lake Mead Park will be closed for demolition and an exciting new replacement until further notice. The rest of the park will remain open, and of course, playgrounds are open at the city's other parks during this time. Heads up for those of you who use the James River Bridge. The Virginia Department of Transportation is advising that the northbound lanes of the Route seventeen James River Bridge from Islay White to Newport News will be closed for repairs starting at nine P M. this Friday, March the seventh, until five A M. Monday, March tenth, all weather permitting, of course. This weekend's closure is necessary for crews to replace a full panel of the bridge's grid deck. You should plan ahead and use alternative routes. Contact, or you can head to VDOT's website for more information. If you've ever wondered how Suffolk's roads, infrastructure, and public services operate, here's a wonderful opportunity for you to find out. Registration is open for the 2025 Public Works Citizen Academy. It's a unique behind-the-scenes look at how the Suffolk Public Works Department keeps the city running smoothly, from major infrastructure projects and snow removal to everyday services like trash pickup. This free four-week program takes place on Thursday nights from six to eight P M. starting April seventeenth, and it wraps up with a graduation ceremony on May the eighth. Each session will break down the many roles that Public Works plays in shaping our Suffolk community. For more information on how to take part, just visit SuffolkVA.us PW Academy, PW Academy. Sorting trash for recycling or curb collection can be a bewitching challenge, and that's why Suffolk Public Works has conjured up the Waste Wizard. So this ultimate spellbook of sorts, you would say, is a way to handle those disposal dilemmas using the Public Works's new online tool called Waste Wizard. You simply type in the item you're unsure about, and presto, it will tell you exactly what to do, whether it belongs in a blue bin, a green bin, a special collection, or a drop-off. It gives you all the guidance you need for the items that require special handling. No more second guessing with the Waste Wizard. You'll find that magical tool at SuffolkVA.us/wastewizard. There is more than one way to show your passion for green this Saint Patrick's Day. Keep Suffolk Beautiful is looking for you to help keep the marsh grasses green with its annual Saint Patrick's Day River Cleanup. Volunteers are needed for this Saturday, March fifteenth cleanup from nine A M. to noon. All ages and abilities are welcome. Cleanup kicks off at Constance Wharf Park in Marina with supplies and registration onsite. If you have a canoe or kayak, bring it along. Keep Suffolk Beautiful is at five-one-four-six-seven-six-zero-four to find out more. And that's Attack That Trash continues March twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth with the Great Suffolk Cleanup. The City of Suffolk needs your help to make a difference in its annual two-day citywide effort dedicated to cleaning litter and debris from our streets, neighborhoods, and our parks. Last year, thousands of volunteers from residents and businesses, organizations, employees here in the City of Suffolk, we all came together to remove more than two thousand bags of trash and nearly one thousand tires. Again, we will provide you the tools to tackle that trash, so hop online to register today at SuffolkVA.us/campaign. And finally, a reminder about the opportunity that you have to share your voice through Suffolk's Public Safety Portal. The City of Suffolk Public Safety Committee wants all of our citizens to know about its online platform that's designed to empower our community and your community. This tool allows citizens to share suggestions and concerns about public safety, neighborhood improvements. Submissions can be made anonymously, but please remember that this portal is not for reporting criminal activity. In case of an emergency, dial nine-one-one. For more information about this Public Safety Committee and to access the portal, you can visit SuffolkVA.us. That's all we have for you this council meeting. There's many ways right up there for you to stay connected with the City of Suffolk and all its happenings. Thank you all. Be safe and have a nice evening.
Thank you, Danny. Okay, we'll now move on to announcements from city council. Councilmember Wright, you're up.
Well, good evening. We just started the month of March, which is Women's History Month, so if you haven't had an opportunity to see what the city is going to do for Women's History, I would encourage those folks to do that. February was a very busy month for me. I went on a couple of field trips with the police department. Chief Bowie gave me a pretty good tour of all of our facilities, and I was able to see our equipment and see what our officers use to protect and serve. And so it's very important to me to understand our staffing, our equipment, our resources, and get a good idea of what the city's working with for response time so that when it comes time, I could properly advocate. Now, that tour was a really good tour, Chief Bowie, and I appreciate that. But I will have to tell you, Chief Baraki and his team took me on a tour this Saturday of the Fire and Rescue Division Department, and I was able to ride ladder eleven, the front and the back. I was able to get in engine twenty-five and look at all of the equipment and the resources that our first responders and firefighters use. And then I was able to climb on top of rescue one to see some of the specialized equipment they use as well. So, Chief Bowie, I will give you another opportunity to allow me to maybe do a ride-along or something, something exciting. But, no, in all seriousness, I had an opportunity to see what our first responders, the equipment that they have, and I'll tell you, we have a lot of good equipment. Our officers do have the resources they need, they do need more, but they are second to none. The experience that I had during this tour allowed me just to see firsthand, and so I deeply appreciate the dedication and the courage of our first responders. For community engagement, I was able to tour the Four Kids Chesapeake Facility. I'm going to check out Suffolk here soon, but I had the opportunity to learn about the efforts to combat homelessness and exploring ways to support their mission as well. Also, this last month, I attended a chartering brunch for the Kiwanis Club and helped them to celebrate the new establishment of their new chapter. I also had the opportunity to attend the Lafayette Bicentennial Tour honoring Suffolk's history and commemorating Lafayette's visit, and that was very, very well done, well put together, and very informative. I attended the N double A C P Awards Banquet, where they recognized individuals making a meaningful impact in our community, and Councilmember Bennett was one of those recognized, and that was well deserved. I also had the opportunity to attend a Black History Program at Temple Bethel, which helped to reflect on the contributions of Black Americans and celebrating the history that we shared. I do want to recognize our fallen officers that were lost, Christopher Reese and Cameron Girvin, and just recognize their sacrifice and bravery in protecting our communities. And also, again, take this opportunity to just say how grateful and thankful I am for our first responders here in Suffolk. My closing thought, and it's a quote from Muhammad Ali, "His service to others is the rent you pay for the room here on earth." And with that, I'll yield my time. Thank you.
Let's see. Get you there. Got to find you on the screen here, Councilman Rector. Next page. There you go. Okay, agenda timeout.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the things that we found out tonight is that new Councilmember Wright doesn't have a very big ego, so I'm going to boost it up a little bit for her. I also attended the Lafayette Banquet, and in addition to, like she said, it was a fantastic event, I talked to several people who were from outside of the area who have been following the two-fifty-two-hundred tour of Lafayette going all around the, primarily the southeast, but the first twenty-four states of the Union, and they were all very, very, very impressed with the quality of the event, and Suffolk could not have looked any better. But Councilmember Wright was honored to be given the responsibility and the duty of making one of the toast. It was a recreation of the original banquet, and she managed, or she did a toast to the Army and the Navy. So very well done. And then also, I also attended the N double A C P Freedom Banquet, and in addition to Councilmember Bennett being recognized, Councilmember Wright was also recognized, so she's to be congratulated for that. I did attend or go to the East Washington Street Forum to see some of the ideas for improving that gateway into our community. I think a lot of good stuff came from that, and I look forward to seeing some of it maybe in the next C I P. We also went to the annual meeting of the Hampton Roads Alliance. I believe Councilmember Bennett was there with me, and then we also were honored to have our new Economic Development Director, Janet Days, with us, and got an opportunity to introduce her to a lot of, not only her compatriots or colleagues from around the area, but also different council members and whatnot, and they all seem just as excited as we are to have her as part of the regional economic development team. And they're, my takeaway from the thing is that there are a lot of areas that are part of that Hampton Roads Alliance that are very, very eager to accept economic development. And one of the newer members is New Kent County, and I can promise you that once the sixty-four corridor between Williamsburg and Richmond gets completed, New Kent County is going to be in a strong position to compete with Suffolk and some of the other areas for some of these economic development opportunities, so we need to keep our foot on the gas on that. So, Chief Bowie, thank you very much for inviting me to the recruitment event that was held last Saturday, gave me an opportunity to go out there and see what the recruits go through. I think the process that you guys have... I think the process that you guys have, where you can get three or four of those steps knocked out in one day, is a great time saver and should be an incentive to anybody that might want to consider being a Suffolk police officer, that we're very interested in having you here and are willing to do everything we can to help you. And then finally, just on a personal note, last Saturday would have been my father's 100th birthday. He did make it to 95, so I think he definitely got entered into the, what I call, the bonus years, but I do miss my father. Just a quick sidebar to that, my parents moved out of their last house in 2005, and one of the things that I used to do for Mother's Day was I would take my mother, obviously a plant. And the last thing that I took to the last house they lived in before they had to move to a retirement center was an hibiscus. And when they moved, my mother was just going to leave it there, and I said, you know, you can't do that. And she said, well, if you want it, take it. So I took that hibiscus at the end of the summer of 2005 and have kept it alive with the aid of Tim Johnson over there giving me advice. And every year, at the end of the growing season, when it's the fret of a frost comes in, I trim it back and I put it down in the basement, and it gets a little bit of light, and I shoot it a little bit of water, maybe two or three times over the winter. But amazingly enough, it put out a bloom on my father's birthday, which is just, you know, sort of gives you goosebumps. That same plant bloomed one time on the death date of my mother's passing, so I don't know what it is about that plant, but it's got all of us in the family a little spooked. But anyhow, hopefully I'll be able to keep it alive.
I'm going to get you, Councilmember Williams. Might have to get the manager to help me with this thing. Here we go.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I wanted to thank everyone that came out to my town hall meeting on February 18th. It was for the downtown section of the Wellaville Borough. To the city manager and staff, you guys did a great job. I would also like to let the citizens who live in the rural section of the Wellaville Borough to know that I will be having a town hall meeting at the Curtis R. Milteer Senior Recreation Center on March 25th, starting at 6:00 p.m. That's March 25th, starting at 6:00 p.m. The Vice Mayor, Mayor, Councilman Richter and I attended the Chesapeake State of the City today. As usual, there's a lot of things going on in Chesapeake. It was a good event, and there's more going on in Suffolk. So, we had a very nice time today. On Thursday, February 27th, I attended the Black History Month Program that was held at Booker T. Washington Elementary School, to Ms. Brock, the principal, Ms. Little, the assistant principal, to the teachers, and to the students. You guys put on an outstanding program, and my granddaughter, she portrayed Rosa Parks in that event. Also, Booker T. Washington have a step team, and they're called Washington Bears. If you haven't seen them perform, you're missing a treat. They are awesome. So if you get a chance to go out to enter the step team competition that Booker T. Washington Elementary School in Suffolk has, you got to see the guys. You have to see this team. I mean, I was just so impressed, so I really enjoyed that. On February 23rd, I also attended the Suffolk Nansman Branch of NAACP Freedom Fund Banquet, and as always, that was a great event. My word for the month of March is compromise, an agreement, or a statement of dispute that is reached by each side making concession, an ability to listen to two sides in dispute and devise a compromise acceptable to both. And that would have been it. However, I just want to thank Park and Recreation for an event that they put on on February 25th. It was called the East Washington Street Public Engagement Meeting. Mr. City Manager, there was a few people that got that date kind of mixed up. If staff can maybe take a look at it and maybe try something again and get it back out there, because there was a lot of people that reached out to me who wanted to be there, but there was a mix-up with the time and the date. To Mark Furlough, Gary Jones, Terry Barona, and staff, I mean, y'all did an excellent job. Hats off to you, and I'm just looking forward to maybe having this engagement again. And with that, I'll say good night.
Councilmember Bennett.
Okay, good afternoon again. I'll start out by saying to all of you that came from Holland, Southwestern, glad you all came out, welcome, and I thank you as the right thing in mind for the Rosenwall School. That is something that I think very few that's left, and I think that's a lot of history there, and I know what you all are saying, and I have your concerns at heart and what you are after trying to do to preserve the Rosenwall School. You didn't say, you were saying Southwestern, but I know what the part of it was the Rosenwall School, so that is something I think that the history there is worth talking about. Also, I'd like to thank Mr. Butts. He came to us this afternoon with our tax assessment, so people will be getting their notices next week, so they'll know exactly what the new assessment will look like for the coming year, and some might be happy and some might be sad. I don't know yet until we get the report, but I'm sure that it's going to be a good report and an honest report, as always, that he puts out for us to share with our constituents and all, and make sure that they understand the process. Also, I'd like to remind us that don't forget to roll our clocks ahead, one hour just coming Saturday, so you don't be late going to church. So, that's the other thing I had jotted down. And also, I want to thank the NAACP for the honor, not only me, but others at the NAACP banquet, and Councilwoman Wright was another councilperson that was honored as well, Dr. Buck, she was honored, left the school board, and also Ms. Byram, and there were others. There was ones that I really had a lot of contact with and relationship with. Also, I'd like to thank Public Works for a job well done with doing the snow. I've heard a lot of good comments about the roads, how they was taken care of, so pass that on to the people. I think you all did a great job with doing that. Also, on the Parks and Rec on the East Washington Street, street scape and all, I think that was a great presentation, and for the people that's been interested in what's taking place at the Phoenix Bank, that is being funded, that is being, should be stopped working, I think, this week after weather is permissible, so we are looking at preserving that history as well of the Phoenix Bank. And with that, I'm not going to say all the places that I attended this week and last week, because it wouldn't be a problem more to hear. But I will like to say that we lost quite a few police officers in the last few weeks, and I attended the funeral of Officer Weaver. He was a police officer that retired here and went to the Sheriff Department and retired there, and his funeral was this past Monday, and I want to send my condolences out to him and all the other officers that lost their lives, especially the ones in Virginia Beach. That was a sad occasion, so my condolences go out to all of them. And with that, I would say good evening.
Councilmember Johnson.
I appreciate everything everybody said tonight, because I'm not going to say any of that. What I'd like to say is to, from the people from the Holy Neck Borough that came out here tonight to talk about the Rosenwall School, I think everybody sitting up here on this dies, and probably the city needs to have a little bit of a history lesson on why the Rosenwall School is so important to our community and to the people that live in our community. But not only is it for the people that are here tonight, it's for the people that live in Holy Neck and for the people that live in the City of Suffolk. Guess what? We're preserving the Phoenix Bank, the City of Suffolk did. Why? Because it's important, and it's important to the people that live in the city, and that's what you guys are here representing. I appreciate you being here. The Rosenwall School is worth saving. We've saved one over in East Suffolk on Sixth Street, but we need to recognize that we can't forget the past and what was there and how vital it was to the rural population of our city and is such a part of our lives. So, I applaud you for being here. Do I know where to get the money? I've told you before I don't, but I am more than willing to help that we can start a drive to find this money and find it quicker than even the city could find it. So with that, what I'd like to say is, most of you went to school with me. One of them was Forest Glen, class of '72, '76. I mean, we all went to school together, and it's important to you guys and important to your families for this to be preserved, so I'm in favor of it as well. I mean, I think that our whole city should be in favor of what it takes to make it happen. So often in the rural areas of the city, we kind of get forgotten sometimes, but let's not be forgotten. So, let's go for it. Let's try to figure out a way that we can make this happen. The city owns the property, and I have from pretty good knowledge that the city would be more than willing for us to be a part of that property. I'm not looking too hard, but somebody said eight acres. I think it's 11 acres actually, but at any rate, it's a perfect site for some kind of facility to commemorate Rosenwall School being there, but also to put forth a playground, a park, basketball hoops, a walking path. There's so many things that we can do with that piece of property, and we can still have whatever we choose to have in the Town of Holland, which is just as important as that area. It's all important, and it's important that we, as a community, preserve our community and try to make our community grow. So, don't think that we're not behind you, and the city, I think, that's why this was so important tonight, that you came and you showed up, and we reminded the city that we're here, we're right there, and we want to see this thing happen. So, you've got my support, you've got the city's support, I know, and whatever we can do to make it happen, bring the young people home. That's what you got to do. Today, I had a young developer call me, the girl's probably 24 years old, and said, Mr. Johnson, what do you think about coming out into the rural area of the city and buying 100 acres and turning it into a rural community, that everybody lives a different way? I mean, that's the kind of thing we're looking for in our community. We want it to be different, in my perspective. That's what I want to see anyway. But thank you, from the bottom of my heart, I'm being honest. I'm sorry we couldn't say, yeah, we've gotten the CIP this time for us to get some money. That's just not how it works, though, but we can start pushing all the buttons we need to push, and whoever's sitting in the council seat out there has to be a little more aggressive than what I've obviously been, but we can still do it. I know we can do it. So, thank you for being here. Thank all of you for being here, and anything I can do, you know where I am. I stand at the same spot I'm always at, and I'm happy to try to help you do whatever we can do to make it work. So, but again, thank you. I'm not going to say anything else. That was my spiel for tonight, but please, 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 don't give up. It's going to take more than one night, but don't give up, and I'll pursue it on this end, you guys pursue it on that end, and we'll come up with a plan. Thank you.
First of all, I want to give my condolences to Gerald Hall and his family, one-time resident of Huntersville and Cavalier Manor in Portsmouth, and also in Churchland. Gerald was a mechanic, served in the military, was a Marine also. I attended NAACP banquet. It was, like they had said, very good. It was one of the, they haven't done it in probably a while, but I think they're back and well attended, and I was glad to see some of the officials there, very impressed. The speaker got down and said some things that was real, and that's one of the things that NAACP might bring that out on you, but it was a good opportunity. Also, to NAACP in Hampton, they had like a town hall meeting. I've seen a few people from the City of Suffolk, maybe we'll bring that there to get the people get ready for the bumpy ride we might have, so I hope we can bring something like that to the City of Suffolk. I just saw a couple of events I couldn't make, I had already had committed, and I think Brandon Rogers from the Western Tightwater Community Service Board, they came out and talked about mental illness and how they can help and how they can be involved. I think this time of his leadership, we're going to have somebody that who really trying to reach out to the community. I think he got some great ideas, and he asked the community what we can do for you, and when somebody says that, that means he's listening, not telling what we have and what we're going to do. He asked the community, well attended, a lot of people asked questions. As a matter of fact, I brought my family there, and he did a good job in making sure that most all the questions was answered. I'm going to talk with the Holland people for a laugh. I got a situation that it bothers me, and every time I say things, it's like I'm trying to agitate, but if I have to do it for my community and the people of Suffolk call me agitator, I'm going to say what I have to say, and I'm going to say if it's going to benefit this city by going forward. I had a problem with the people who pick up the blue garbage cans. We had a snowstorm that was pulled to us two weeks in advance, almost, at least a week. The blue can hadn't been picked up on my street in three weeks. During the weekend, during the time of the snow, I called some of the officials, and they had to get back with me, because the people who pick up that garbage, that blue can did not respond. So, I waited. Garbage is all over the street, and matter of fact, I went and helped somebody put some garbage there, so I called somebody on the weekend, which I don't want to do, and he said to me that a possibility they're going to pick it up on Saturday. So, I waited again. Saturday came, nothing happened. So, what happened was, I called one of the official again, and he gave me somebody else, Mr. Marshall. So, Mr. Marshall, I know it's not the city, because y'all did your job after the snowstorm. Y'all did a great job. I was so glad to see y'all come and do what y'all have to do, but I'm just saying, I don't know who the company is who pick up that blue can. I just think we got to get on, find out what's going on. My garbage can hasn't been picked up yet, and today I decided to just take the blue can in because of the weather we having, and they supposed to be there. That's three weeks. That's unacceptable, and what is, the problem is, I'm right on Main that crossed the street from Texas Roadhouse, Kroger. All this business see garbage in front of this community. It don't look good. It just don't look good. Like I said, I went and helped take some of that garbage and put it in cans, so like I said, thank you, the officials in Suffolk, y'all helped me much as you could, y'all got answers, y'all, you know, did the best y'all can, but how can we get, make sure that don't happen no more? That's a big concern with me. The other thing is, the Holland community. The Holland community is a community that I have seen when I first came down. Matter of fact, I used to go to the Christmas parties. We had to have a Christmas party, have a good time. I met some of the people who spoke, and I'm glad Councilman Johnson said what he said in a good way. But like you said, that that community have a lot of pride. That community lived when times wasn't as good as it is today. History mean a lot to people. Certain people shouldn't mean a lot to everybody, but that Holland community always step up to the plate when they have something. They don't ask for much, but they get it done themselves. They have people that went to them schools, have achieved good careers, teachers, so for them to ask, just to look at it and see what we can do and what the community wants, that's important. They didn't say recreational. They didn't say recreation, they said multicultural center. And I met with some of them, they had some other ideas. Like for instance, it can be where they can pay their bills at. They don't have to come all the way downtown or here or where I stay, we have it. So why they can't have something like that? They always, already say they don't mind putting up offices there. I think it's due. I think it's, they, they need something right then and there. And like one speaker said about the emergency, yes, you do need, how the weather is, somewhere they can go, not 20 miles away. So I think that we should look at that and see what's going on, see what we can do and try to do what the people ask for, try to people, what we can do, what they want. They got a lot of land, we can park and get it done. So with the Holland community, thank you all for coming. You always know, I got a good ear and I listen, I come by and I visit. And I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be there for you, regardless who in the chair. And I think Mr. Johnson still be here, hopefully. But regardless who's in the chair, I got four. I'm gonna be there for y'all and see what can we do in y'all community. And I just wanted to mention this here. Some things about Suffolk reminds me of black history. And the reason why I said that, because more and more I learned places I ain't never been, places or areas and stuff like that. When February come across, I'm a history guy. When February come across, I learned so much that I didn't know, wasn't taught in school and other people didn't know about it. But I just wanted to give a little credo to this movie. I think Six Triple Eight about women that made sure the male got to the military, the soldiers. If anybody don't understand certain cultures, I think if you have time, it's on Netflix. Look at that movie. Look at what they had to go through and look how they succeed. And like I said, black history brings out a lot of history, a lot of thoughts and hope and feeling. That's one movie I asked you, just like Hidden Figures. It just changed me and motivated me and just wanted to do good and help people much as I can. But that's one movie I say, oh, look at that, it's on Netflix. With that, I'll say, God bless.
Let me go ahead and wrap it up here. Seems like it's been a while since we had our last meeting. Of course, our last meeting was canceled because of the weather event, the snow. And I too want to commend Public Works and Emergency Management, our Police Department, all our first responders. I actually received a phone call from Governor Youngkin that night to ask how we were doing. I didn't know it was him, so I didn't answer the phone, but I did call him back. But in the meantime, I checked with the manager and said, hey, the governor just called, I'm getting ready to call him back, what do you want? So he said, we're in pretty good shape. He said, our primary roads are open, this is okay, this is okay, if he's got four or five dump trucks, tell them to send us some dump trucks with a plow on them. I think we got close, but anyhow. So I was rather impressed that he called. And then in the morning, about 7:15, Shep Miller, who's the Secretary of Transportation, called and wanted to know how the city was doing. So I just wanted to put a little small shout out to Richmond. Too many times, and not so much with the local legislator, but maybe the Virginia poet, the news agencies, they kind of forget that Suffolk exists every now and then. And it was nice to know that they were thinking about us. But what was most impressive, like I said, the following morning, when Shep Miller called him, I said, no, we're in pretty good shape. You know, we got the people on the scene, primaries are open and, like I said, I couldn't have been more pleased with the response and how efficient everyone was in removing the snow within a day or so. Fire and rescue, I know there's a lot been going on. It seems like every time, there's, there's been a lot of structured fires. We had the fire at the landfill, which I understand took about six hours to put out. And that had to do with lithium batteries, which I think is something we're all gonna have to contend with. I know the fire department has a special process to do that, to handle the lithium, a special SOP to handle the lithium batteries. But we had a representative from SIPSA here today and the first thing he commented on is how efficient our fire department was in solving that problem. So once again, my hats off to our staff. Just to mention a few things, and there's been a lot mentioned, there was actual a lot going on. The Lafayette Bicentennial Banquet, I mean, I wasn't really a history buff, really wasn't into Lafayette, but evidently a lot of people are. I mean, this went on for about a month. And I went to the banquet and I really, I told them, I said, I hadn't seen that much excitement since Blue Bell Ice Cream had their grand opening and they were giving away free ice cream in the middle of the summer. Other than that, wasn't anything close, but it was just amazing. You know, a lot of people were in period attire and I actually learned a lot about Lafayette. What else we got here? Reverend Dr. Naomi Chambers had a prayer breakfast at the Kingsfort Ruhrten. She was under the weather and was not able to come, but she's an outstanding woman who's done a lot for our city. The 23rd, we already mentioned NAACP Freedom Fund Banquet at my friends at Temple Bethel. Very well done, a little long, but it was okay. It's your fault. I told Councilmember Wright, if it wasn't for her, I'd have been gone. It was a four-hour event, let's put it that way. Slow start, slow finish, but they covered a lot of territory. What can I say? Saturday, I too got an invite from the chief and attended the recruitment event. I couldn't imagine it being any better organized than what it was. I mean, it was just on point for someone to be able to show up, fill out an application, take the written test, take the physical test, do an interview and then end up before the chief. And then once they go through all that, they can literally be offered a job right then, contingent upon the background check. But I mean, what a, what a efficient way to be able to try to recruit officers as well as anything else. You know, it should, when you take, when you take the process and you make the process easy, then the results are substantially better at the end of the day. So I understand we had about 40 people showed up. So that's pretty amazing. We had a, we had a great day of the weather, too. So that probably helped a little bit. I went out to Florence Bowser High School, Florence Bowser Elementary School. Been a little while, but I participate with the Humane Society in their Barks Program, books and reading to kids in Suffolk. So I took one of my dogs, one of the corgis, who's a therapy dog, and had the kids read to us for about an hour and a half. They did about this much reading, about that much playing with the dogs, but it was all good. Had a great time, the staff was great, the kids were great. And it's nice to see what's going on there. Very impressive as far as what Bowser's doing. Like I said, the staff, the kids, everything, we're just off the chain. State of the city today, city of Chesapeake, pretty nice little city, but we got a little bit more on them than they got on us, just personal opinion. It's been mentioned about the tragic loss of the two officers in Virginia Beach. And when I was thinking about it, when you look at it and you say, wow, that was Virginia Beach, but you know what, that could have just as easily been Suffolk, just scratch out the city. I mean, something as benign as pulling somebody over for an expired tag and that's what you got. So it really gives you pause and brings home the reality of the potential, potential harm our officers face every day when they put on their uniform. And when you lose officers in line of duty, it just doesn't affect that city, it affects really all of us, every community, every department, every family who relies on the courage of those that wear the badge. And so, once again, thank you for everything that you do and your troops do. And with that, I will go to my quote of the night, which is from John F. Kennedy, who needs absolutely no introduction. And that is, "As we express our gratitude, as we express our gratitude, we must never forget that the highest appreciation is not to utter words, but to live by them." And with that, I will ask for a motion for adjournment. Let me get back to agenda discussion. Councilmember Williams, so moved, motion for approval, Councilmember Williams, Vice Mayor Ward. Second from Vice Mayor Ward. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rector?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Wright?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ward?
Say yes. Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Dimon?
Yes.
Motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
This meet stays adjourned.